Soon as that happens. So everybody put your smiles on. All right, again, good afternoon and welcome to our Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting, this for June tenth, two thousand twenty-four. We want to welcome everyone in our audience this evening, as well as those who are now joining us by YouTube, Internet, TV, and a host of other things. So, but we appreciate everyone tuning in this evening. In our first order of business, we're going to have our invocation. And we have Pastor Christopher Bass with us from the Philadelphia Lutheran Church. And so Pastor, if you'll come, and then we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Jeff Branch will lead us in that, so.
Standing for the invocation. Fantastic. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Bass, and I'm a vicar at Philadelphia Lutheran and Saint John's in Lenore. These are two little churches that are in the more rural parts of our county. And so I was just invited here today. I'm so happy that the people of North Carolina are so overwhelmingly hospitable and, and just very gracious and kind to me over these last few years that we've been here. Luther was a great one for reminding us all about our civic duties in living in what he called two different kingdoms, that is, a secular world and a religious world or a spiritual world. That as true believers in Christ, we engage our community in a concrete way to foster innovation, positive change, and a deeper relationship with our common God. Luther often used the image of a great cedar tree of Lebanon in describing the purpose of a just and benevolent government, one that is straight and true. A reading from Ezekiel, chapter seventeen. Thus says the Lord God, I myself will take a sprig from the lofty top of a cedar. I will set it out. I will break off a tender one from the topmost of its young twigs. I myself will plant it on a high and lofty mountain. On the mountain height of Israel, I will plant it in order that it might produce boughs and bear fruit and become a noble cedar. Under it, every kind of bird will live. In the shade of its branches will nest winged creatures of every kind. All the trees of the field shall know that I am the Lord. I bring low the high tree. I make high the low tree. I dry up the green tree and make the dry tree flourish. I am the Lord. I have spoken. I will accomplish this. I hope you all can appreciate that being a Lutheran in, in this place, I'm, I'm almost a minority everywhere I go, so. So for all of us here that are Lutherans, the Lord be with you. Wise and faithful God, come into our meeting tonight that we may keep our minds and the eyes of our hearts focused on the beauty of your creation. Help us to have confidence in our deliberations, making important decisions that change us all for the better. Allow that we can be a part of this most noble work as we enjoy the fruit of the great cedar tree where we all can flourish. Amen.
Everyone face the flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, we have more than a few here. Uh, we've had a busy month. Would like to add item twenty-four, which would be a budget amendment to the DHHS building for a security system in the amount of a hundred three thousand dollars. Item twenty-five would be a contribution to the nonprofit Tuttle State Forest from our funds over in Soul and Water. And then item twenty-six will be another fireworks display for the town of Rhode Island. They all come in late in the week, so.
All right. You said it faster than I write it.
Sorry, sir. Twenty-four is the camera system amendment.
Anybody have any questions over the agenda amendments? And if not, do I hear a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the evening's agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right, any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And so our first item for decision is a call for a public hearing for naming of an unnamed road. Gringer Lane? Am I saying that right? So Micah's coming this evening.
Hey, Micah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we had a developer come through, and I believe that it was going to go through the planning office, um, but in their time at the planning office, me and Shelly discussed it. Um, they did not have to go through the naming through their side, so that's why we're doing it through the commissioners meeting here tonight. So I'm asking for a vote in the next meeting to be named Gringer Lane, is how they have said it and spelled it, is G R I N G E R Lane. And they have two other names that they've submitted, if, if you do not want to go with Gringer, but that was their first choice, that all the residents that have purchased properties have agreed to.
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't think we have a Gringer Lane.
No, it's just a call, yeah, it's just a call to have a vote in the next meeting.
Right, okay.
So.
But we don't have a Gringer in the county, right? No other?
No, there is not one other in the county.
Didn't think so.
So do I hear a motion, we call for the public hearing to be held on, uh, July?
Tenth.
Tenth?
It is the eighth, thank you.
July the eighth.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we, but don't have a public hearing vote on this, the July the eighth meeting.
All right, any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, so thank you, Micah.
Thank you, I'll see you on the next one.
Next, we're, uh, going to enter into our fiscal year budget, uh, and our public hearing to be held over our fiscal year budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, upcoming year. And we don't have anyone signed up, uh, this evening for that. Is anybody here in the audience that specifically wants to speak to the upcoming budget? Don't everybody jump up at once? All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion that we open the public hearing for the budget.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
All right, so while we're in this open, uh, hearing, is this when we want to hear from you at this point?
We'll do the presentation?
Yes, sir.
And adopt the ordinance? All right, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Again, we can do, uh, budget and do the spreadsheets and the normal manager's message, but what I thought would like to do is continue what we did last year, is kind of show examples of what your budget actually means with, for you and for the citizens. So we break it down in all the funds that we have, and our largest fund, of course, is general fund. Our total budget's a hundred, just under a hundred twenty-four million dollars, but you'll find out there's a lot to that. So highlights for this year is the property tax rate remains the same. We've had a significant amount of tax-based growth as well, and then continuing to support employees with merit one and two. Also, we'll have the third part of three, um, pay scale implementation increases. Veteran services, we're having some expanding services there. Medicaid expansion is a big part of your budget this year, we'll go into that in detail. EMS staffing, we continue to have more and more folks need paramedicine, and we'll continue, this is to be the second year of the community grant pool for some of our nonprofit partners. So let's start with general fund. General fund is broken down into a few key categories. A lot of people look at what you do for your tax dollars. And so public safety, human services, and education being our largest expenditure, but that's not our entire education budget. We'll go through that in just a minute as well. Also economic and fiscal development and a few of the other smaller ones, but you can see how it breaks down with public safety, human services, and education being almost all your budget. Public safety, this year, uh, we've got some really neat things going on. We have an older SWAT robot, goes in and monitors, we're having to deal with people who are barricaded in without sending an officer into risk that. The operating system for that robot is pretty old, it's went down, so to replace it costs more than to buy a new machine. And so we'll also have some contributions from the asset seizure funds to go in and help, uh, upgrade that, so we're able to deploy, uh, gas into a building without putting our officer at risk. Night vision and eight patrol vehicles with canine cages. And then we've had flock cameras in the budget for the last prior two years, this will be the third year with them, but you got free use of those for the prior two years. Now, did you have a full deployment? We've had to add that expense into the budget. You'll notice that our sheriff department and detention office take up half of the emergency services budget. The rest is broken down between EMS, fire marshal, emergency management, comms. Obviously, we'd like to talk about our folks here. Uh, we have, uh, a major who we think may be promoted next month, the sheriff upon the resignation and retirement of our beloved Sheriff Allen Jones. And then we've got a new paint scheme coming in for patrol cars this year. This has been a very popular paint scheme, uh, we only have the one car, so we're going to be adding that to the fleet as they matriculate through. Emergency services, our guys are out all the time, we rent, we respond to over twenty thousand calls a year. And then we, we host training for not only just for our folks, but for the region and all parts of the state in emergency management and large scale disasters. This year in the budget, you also have two ambulances to be remounted. It's now a thirty-six month lead time for a new ambulance. We can turn around and remounts a little bit quicker than that, with less than, depending on the scale, anywhere from six months to, to a year. So that's why we're recommended to keep the fleet up to date. And your restart program, it's not part, it's its own separate budget because the funds are limited on how you can spend them, but you now have one of the strongest teams in the state, half a million dollar a year produces harm reduction for citizens and peer support specialists. We now have three peer support specialists on staff, and they're doing a great job, and they're actually consulting with counties all across the state now. You went from having no program four years ago to now you're leading the way. So let's look at human services. Human services is the other part of our budget, and this is where we receive the majority of our revenue that's not tax dollars back. And I want to share with you, particularly, some of the things that we have going on. We have, uh, reinserted now the, um, I want to try to think of the day we have, uh, celebration of life. That's one of our largest attendance events in the county. And then we have our childcare day, where child health and safety. And so those two events touch about the youngest and the oldest, but here's something I want to show with you. Medicaid expansion, which started in December. Since two thousand fourteen, Medicaid caseload in this county has increased a hundred and four percent because of our aging population, while staff has only increased twenty-seven percent. In this current budget, the state is providing for six more people to help make sure that Medicaid is deployed correctly, that you have the correct certifications, and that people are not abusing Medicaid, and people are getting their benefits. Just since December, we've had two thousand nine hundred and nineteen additional Medicaid folks. And those are all on full Medicaid coverage, so this is their only source of insurance. Expansion funds are a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars last year, two hundred sixty-three this year, this year, so the expansion is at no cost to the Caldwell, no cost to Caldwell County. But the caseload that we're working is eleven hundred people per employee, that's just impossible to maintain. So if we're able to add these new positions this year in the budget that's paid for by the Medicaid expansion, the goal is to try to get that into the sub-nine hundred, which is the state recommendation. And then I want you to pay special attention to this chart here. This is how many people in Caldwell County are on some form of Medicaid, almost twenty-two thousand folks. One, uh, one-third of your entire population basically is on Medicaid. Human services, our health department's done some great stuff this year, and I want to commend our health director and the staff. They've made a, a very strong effort in this past budget year with, with almost little revenue that they could go to do this with, but extend behavioral health opportunities, and so we did that with two, two operations, and we have behavioral health on site now for our employees three days a week. So if you're having a crisis, you or your family member, you, somebody you can go and talk to. Now, it's, it's only part-time, but we're getting there. Another thing we want to talk about is, uh, our folks at, um, animal care. We have one of the highest rabies transmissions in the state, and so our animal care director has now been asked to, to be on the animal control and rabies board for the state. We administered almost two thousand rabies vaccinations in calendar year twenty-three, so that's pretty, pretty impressive. And, uh, I think half of that was paid for by a grant. We got the, got it paid for out of the, uh, almost all the doses were halfway paid for. Let's see. Next, let's talk about education now. I want to zoom in and show you a slide you've seen before. This is our general fund, straight-up contribution of almost nineteen million dollars every year into education funds, but we do more than that, and we want to show that. We actually do quite a bit more with debt service for both the community college and the Caldwell County school system. And if you add all of that up, you add the SROs and the nurses, that's twenty-seven point four million that we actually put in. So it's a much larger number than people think. And we really hadn't talked about all that in the past. This was an event that Mr. Branch and I got to attend earlier this year, and it was the kickoff for the new, uh, school year. And Jeff, you remember what they taught us that day?
It was about AI. It was really, really shocking what's coming.
It was.
Down the pipe.
One of the best presentations I've seen, and, and they're, they were telling us about how they're starting to teach kids in kindergarten, first grade, AI. So there'll be a whole generation of a whole new level of technology that we, we have not yet to really experience, and our school systems are already on top of it.
And lots of people's going to be losing their jobs.
It'll be a transition, that's for sure. Also, want to talk about our partnership with Caldwell County Schools. Here's our Touch a Truck event. We also do a recycling and sanitation training to try to help keep the community clean. It's one of the events for that, and our school resource officers, how, how they contribute to the community, and how this, in many cases, is the first experience a child has with government outside of school. And so it's great having our law enforcement. And then we ended the year this year with our town holiday, with our elected officials talking to our soon-to-be graduates about how to stay, what, what we need to change to make them want to stay here in our community. General government, this is kind of the catch-all for everything else. This is, this is what you would call the, the staff that, that does their work to keep everything else running. Big changes coming to veteran services, we'll talk about that in a minute, but I want to pay, uh, special attention to human resources. Human resources is a big number, but that's where your liability insurance is at, that's where your workman's comp's at, so that's where those are expensive. If we're doing drug tests, we're doing hires and new employees orientation, getting everybody signed up for their benefits, that's the first experience our new employees have is with HR. I'll share some numbers with you here. How many veteran services officers do you think Catawba County has? Now, they're more than twice our size. Just take a guess. They just got their third person. Avery County has a part-time person. Wilkes County has one. Burke County has one. Alexander County has one. Everybody that touches us other than Catawba County only has one or a part-time person. At the end of this, uh, summer, we'll have three full-time veteran service officers with this budget. Claims for veterans has more than doubled in just the last two years. And I attribute that to the wars running down, veterans retiring, moving, changing jobs, moving back here. We have a, a lot of calls and claims, but think about it, when we're doing twenty-four calls or claims a day.
I do know also that a lot of our, uh, a lot of our activity comes from other counties because they're not getting, they're so backed up, there's no, they can't provide the service, so they come here to get service, so.
And even other states.
Bleeding into us and other states as well, correct?
Yeah, we've had people that were here on vacation, say in Blowing Rock or somewhere, they look online, they see our veteran service office, they see the rating on it, they'll just walk in the door. Because they could get service in their home community.
Lot of bleed over from other counties, though.
I tell you, we're going to continue with, uh, making improvements. We have a huge improvement we're getting ready to make for registrar Dean's office and our records keeping there, that's important. And this is just what all goes into it. We've got a new veteran services director, very excited about Joe's entrance into our family, he's done a great job so far. And then facility services, and what we're doing here is recycling electronics, and our electronics tonnages keep going up every day. So, uh, we have more and more of that, and it's, it's an important feature, we have a full-time staff, that that's all they do now. So economic development, we've completely restructured our entire economic development department. Tonight, you're going to make some new appointments, or continued appointments to the EDAC board, but, uh, and also, when we traveled to Bladen County, we saw that we need to add another, uh, tool in our tool belt for economic development, for a nonprofit organization to add, to have, uh, basic, just a wider variety of reach on economic development. You guys got to meet with Fleet Genius, our industry partner of the year this year. And then we had a big dedication and recommittal of the Chamber of Commerce in the Commerce Building, that was a fantastic event, and we honored Mr. Bobby White with the Longleaf Pine Award, some great attendance, quite a, quite a huge event we put on there. Economic development stretches across counties. Our partnership with, uh, the, uh, Foothills Regional Airport has flourished, we just got an announcement for another fifty thousand dollar grant out there, and we've also received six million dollars in infrastructure this year to build more hangars, more hangar space. Jeff, if I remember right, we have ninety-two, ninety-three on the waiting list for hangar space right now for aircraft.
Yes, sir.
And so, uh, that's important, we have eleven hundred acres there that needs to be developed. And then we're hosting meetings, uh, about commerce, workforce development, and economic development across the state. We're trying to make sure that Caldwell County's on the forefront of that. This is just one of those meetings with our workforce partners here. Uh, I believe this is, uh, McCrory Modern, right? Bernhardt. Uh, this is Bernhardt Tour, one of our furniture factories, furniture is still a big deal here in our region. The other thing is, is that we're continuing to build projects, uh, and housing is no exception. We read you just a few stats here real quick on actual housing, uh, permits and construction. Two thousand and nine, how many housing permits do you think were issued in Caldwell County? It's in the single digits.
I was going to say it wasn't many in oh-nine, yeah.
In twenty-twenty-one, it was two hundred forty-one, twenty-twenty-two, two hundred and ninety-six, twenty-twenty-three, two hundred and eighty-six. Already this year, for the first four months, it's a hundred and five. So it looks like we're going to top three hundred new housing permits this year. So with that, uh, if you're, uh, a resident, and say a storm hit and a tree come down and pulled the power connection out of your home, we have to break off from doing a building inspection, say somebody's pouring concrete, and, because that's considered an emergency to get electric restored right back to that house. We don't have enough folks to cover the entire county, they're working zones now, but they will pull off. So what we're asking, and our inspectors are getting older, uh, our inspections department is asking that we create a new additional building inspector position that's self-funded by the fees themselves, so it's no new tax dollars going into it, it is only those that are using it, in order to keep up with the growth in building inspections. This would be an apprenticeship-type position where we bring somebody in, we teach them and build them up, and run them up through the ranks, so by, in a few years, they'll be able to be a level-three inspector. We're looking for that, that right person. Also in this department, we have our folks at Soul and Water who are doing a great job doing streambank restoration and education across the county, and we've got multiple streambank restoration projects we're very proud of this year, you saw some presented earlier. Our county four-H, trying to teach our folks about agriculture and horticulture in the coming years, to keep that industry going. Cultural and recreational, now this is mostly library, but, um, our library usages actually went up, our, uh, return books, uh, that people have failed to return, that's actually down because we went to a no-find library system. And, uh, just want to sing a lot of praises to these guys. Uh, in a time when we're more and more distracted by electronics and data, we've got more and more people reading and participating at the library. And libraries just aren't for books anymore. Here's our folks getting ready for the Christmas parade, I was looking for a picture of Krampus, but, uh, so we could kind of knock on the door a little bit. But some are reading sign-ups, and even our library's involved in our playgrounds and our parks now by having reading materials there for the kids to enjoy. And, uh, knitting, who would have thought that multi-generational knitting would have been something you would go to your library, but it is truly, uh, kids and adults, they're enjoying that. And then, uh, games, uh, you know, people come and rent board games, try stuff out, and it's, it's been a huge hit for us. But here's a young man, a special needs person, learning bow and arrow in your library. Who would have ever thought, you know, we'd be doing something like that? And of course, Touch a Truck, which is one of our most popular events, uh, that the library hosts. Debt service, everybody always wants to know about debt service. So here's our peer group, these are all the counties that are under ninety-nine thousand in population, but more than fifty thousand. Caldwell County is, is right here, uh, we're on the lower end of the scale, so that's really good. Just below our folks, our friends in Burke and, and Wilkes County, and see, uh, Watawa County is just a little bit behind us, so that's really good. So if, the further down you go, the more debt you're carrying, so we should be pretty proud of that. I noticed that a lot of these are in the west, something about that, just something that's, I don't know, just, just, just an observation. Here's statewide, the average of all counties, uh, no matter their size, and here's the counties in our range, and in our ratio is almost fifty percent of everybody else, so you're doing pretty good, you're managing your finances well. All right, let's look at a few more highlights. Water fund is doing very well. We're asking you to increase the monthly capital charge, uh, up to two dollars per meter monthly, and our water rate increase coming from our funding partners in Granite Falls and City of Lenore, is to increase four percent per one thousand gallons. Obviously, continuing our major capital projects list, these are a couple here, our water tank and our skating system, but I want to brag on our water department a lot. Somebody recognize where this is at?
Collinsville?
No? This is Sawmills, this was the old stump dump. The debris, the concrete, the tires, this is our folks working very hard to turn what was a, basically, a local landfill into an asset, taking a liability and turning it into something, this will be our future industrial park here. They've hauled out tens of thousands of tons of mulch, and were able to recycle that into the landfill, so you can drive over top of the landfill without sinking into it. All those tires are cleaned up, and basically just create, you know, cleaning up some of this environmental hazard that was there, and turning it into something that's worthwhile and creating future jobs with it, and in partnership with the town Sawmills. This is, I, I think y'all remember this day because it was cold, man. I don't know how cold it was, but it felt like it was, you know, uh, you could, you could see your breath freeze. Capital outlay this year, we have, uh, just a mini track that we're going to replace, and then the older unit will go into general fund to be used, and then auto flagger and a boring machine. Uh, you guys were very generous to us this year, we replaced two dump trucks in the current budget cycle, that needed to be, because one of them is this old Ford that's in this picture here, and it no longer runs, and you can't get parts for it, so thanks to the commissioner for helping us do that. So let's talk about our partners at Fire and Rescue. Uh, our departments are still, call volume is not decreasing for them, but membership is, it's hard to find volunteer firefighters anymore. Basically, we're to a system now where the majority of firefighters are paid something, so they're asking for additional budget increases. Uh, here are our net increases from Valme, Kings Creek, and Sawmills this year, and this is the total line. We're still below the eighteen cents, fifteen is the threshold for the fire tax. We're getting some folks starting to bump up against that, but then we've added the two, the five cent rescue tax on top of that to help our folks out, we're one of the few counties in the state that do that. And then here's the total budgets estimated, uh, for the fire departments and what they'll receive in revenues. And this is based on tax collection rate, so it could be a little more than that, it could be a bit, little bit less than that, just depends on what we bring in. And want to thank our folks in the fire service for trying to reach out to the, to the younger generations and build firefighters. Most everybody that was a firefighter, their dad was a firefighter, or their uncle, or their granddad, or somebody in their family took them there. So that's important, we need to continue to do this program, and, and special thanks to our folks in Gamble for putting that on.
Use money to budget for that program this year.
So we have that community grant program?
Yep.
And that's what we'll use it for, yeah. And just here's some action sites of our folks working together, different departments learning, training together, because it takes everybody. There's no one department big enough to handle some of the issues that we have. For my members, two Christmases ago, I think we had every firefighter in the county out on Christmas, uh, Eve night with, you know, multiple fires, multiple broken water lines, accidents everywhere, industrial calls, I believe we did fourteen hundred calls in just a few hours. So it took everybody there to help out. And just some more equipment, more training, uh, this was actually a partnership between state emergency management, Caldwell County Emergency Services, and the volunteer fire departments from multiple jurisdictions around the state to work on wrecks, and then we had a donated bus from our transit authority so we could work a, multiple scenarios, you know, as if a bus had hit a power pole, a car hit a power pole, and then a bus, uh, if you had multiple, uh, you know, people that you had to rescue or attend to, mass casualties unit, and we're able to train there. And all this funding allows us to do that. General fund revenues, let's look, obviously, property tax is your big one, but it's only forty-eight percent of your budget. Everybody thinks property tax because that's the one they see the most, but actually, your, uh, departmental revenue is just as big as the rest of the budget. Property tax remained sixty-three cents on the hundred, uh, and a continued tax-based growth, another estimated seventy million dollars in tax-based growth over, over another estimated $70 million in tax-based growth over, over prior year. And remember, last year was a record year that was non-reval of 170. So in two years, you've had a quarter million dollars in tax-based growth. That's important, whether that's someone adding new equipment for their industry, whether you bought a new car or whether you bought, built a new home or you bought a house and renovated it. All that is there. We estimate sales tax about 3% growth year over year. That's still great. If you guys remember pre-COVID, if you had 1.5% growth on sales tax, that was a great year. That was a good year. So during COVID, we saw double digits, 10, 11, 12, 14, 16% growth year over year, month over month. Obviously, there were some major activities going on there with COVID, but we also had a change in the sales tax, tax structure with online sales tax being able to be collected again. So having 3% projected for the year, that's still very good. Don't, don't think that's bad. COVID years were just a crazy anomaly, and so now we're getting closer back to a normal budget. And this is what you can see here. Probably biggest thing that you guys want to know, what is departmental revenue? So departmental revenue is the reimbursements we get from DSS and health. We use a huge grant operations that we get in tens of millions of dollars a year. Ambulance fees, we saw almost a 25% increase in our ambulance fee collections because if we went to a new, a new provider able to collect those bills. Building inspection fees are up and of course, our registered D's collections. All right, looking ahead. Obviously, housing growth is going to continue to be an issue. We're, a lot of people don't know, the county is quite large, but there's only about 30% of the county that's actually buildable for high density development because that's where the sewer's at. And that's almost all the southern end of the county, right along with 321A and the 321 corridors. So it's a very narrow band of developable area in your, in your county. So the rest is going to be on larger lots out in the county in, in more expensive homes. So affordable housing is always going to be an issue and being able to keep up with population demands. 2022 was the first year of population growth you've seen in over a decade. And of that group, over 50% was over the age of 50. So just remember that. Cages Mountain EMS base, we just did the groundbreaking on that last week. And we're looking forward to that project to be under construction for the next 15, 16 months. Courthouse, we're continuing design on courthouse and hope to be able to, to break ground on that next year. Emergency Operations Center, we will now be the host for all of emergency management in western North Carolina. So if, if it's a multi-community agency or event, cyber attack, tornado, you know, car chase, whatever, we will be the headquarters for the western part of the state from essentially Salisbury all the way to the Tennessee line and Georgia lines. That will be us. And that's under design right now. And I, I'd look for us to probably break ground on that first quarter sometime next year. The Railroad Authority legislation is moving in the General Assembly to rebrand and redo the railroad and turn that liability into an asset as well. That's a big holdup for economic development. We need to get, get that where it needs to be. Water system improvements will continue. Evergreen Industrial Park is underway. And Foothills Regional Airport development, we're getting more and more traction over there. And we're going to start very soon, the taxiway extension, and then start building hangars out there. So have more development there. And then of course, the big existential threat on the horizon is the Charlotte Inurbation Transfer. So I think that's going to be an expensive undertaking, but we will not be alone. And there's already a coalition of, over a dozen counties already ready to help with fight with that. So I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
All right, anybody have any questions?
I just want to thank staff for all they've done on this budget. I think it's, it takes a lot of work, a lot of time. I don't think people realize the time and effort that goes into preparing a budget for a county the size of, that we have. And I think it's, we sometimes don't understand that. I think we forget the complications of trying to budget for all these different things in departments. So my hats off to our staff, county manager, finance department. All the hard work has been done. I know that our department heads were asked to cut some, cut some things out of their budget that they had originally asked for. And I think most of them came back with some significant reductions. So I appreciate them taking the time to dig a little bit deeper and make sure that they're not asking for any more than they truly need to provide the service that they're providing. So thank our staff for all you've done with it.
All right. Anyone else?
I tell you what sort of concerns me is from everybody I've talked to, we're betting on our revale next year to pay for this budget, a big part of this budget. And, you know, we just put a big burden on our people the last revale. We jacked, pretty much raised taxes on everybody when we, when we didn't go revenue neutral. And I just think this time around, it's just been four years. I really think it, I just don't like the idea of us betting on the, betting on the revale to make up part of our budget for when it comes. You know, I just think it's time for us tightening our belts a little bit, go back over this budget, see what we can cut, what we ain't, we ain't having to bet on, well, we can go revenue neutral next time around instead of betting on all this revenue coming in from the revale next time around. Is what concerns me about this.
Tony, are we doing that?
The answer to that's a little bit complicated, but typically when we appropriate fund balance, if we stay below $5 million, and obviously this is kind of an estimate, you know, but if we stay below $5 million, we don't spend any of it. If we go above $5 million, we will probably spend some above $5 million. This one's at 6.3, I think is where it landed. So there's a chance we're going to use some fund balance with this budget. You know, I, as far as the revale cycle, that's kind of, you know, philosophical question in a way. It's always been my experience in my 20 years of doing these budgets is that we do kind of go from revale to revale. You know, we get, we get our money at the revale and then we spend it down until the next revale. Whether that's a good way to do it or a bad way to do it, I can't say, but it's just been what we've seen. I think the concept of revenue neutral is a difficult one to live up to because everything the county buys, whether that's the power bill, supplies, vehicles, paying their people, whatever it is, that goes up every year, especially the last couple of years with inflation. To hold our revenues at the same place in time while all our costs go up is just not tenable for the long term. You know, I'm trying to be as conservative as I can and I'm always, you know.
Well, we just said we were raising, I mean, we're getting more tax base and all this, so we're getting more money in.
Right.
Too.
We, we've done well in that area, but it's, it's probably not enough to keep up with, with all the other cost increases we're seeing. Just the cost for people has been a, a big thing we've had to deal with. You know, we've had a lot of trouble retaining people and we've increased pay to, to help with that. So, I mean, and, and don't get me wrong, I'd love to see us go revenue neutral. I'd like to cut the rate below that. I mean, I'd like to see tax as low as possible, but at the same time, you can't cut the taxes unless you've, you still got to have enough money to pay for your, you know, your, your budget. And I can't, and I don't see much left to cut in this budget. We asked the department heads to, to weigh in and they found us almost a million dollars that we cut out. You know, I'm sure in this budget, there's something that we could cut, but I don't see anything that's big that, that's really going to move the needle.
So we're going to raise taxes on people again next time, next revale, that's what you're saying.
Well, that won't be decided till next year.
To Jeff's point, we're not count, and maybe I misunderstood. We're not counting on 2025's revenue to pay for 2024's.
Correct.
Budget.
Right.
Because that's the what, the way I took your question was that we were.
Well, we're, this is going to be our. This is going to get us to our budget and then we're going, are we going to be able to stay revenue neutral? Are we going to jack it up again as soon as it comes? And we could maybe cut some more out of here or. I'm not saying fire people or nothing like that, but when people retire, we can cut different places. We've got opportunity now to change some positions around it. We, we don't have, didn't have field. I don't know if they are now or not. So, you know, maybe we should look at some of this stuff instead of betting on a cum card down the river with the revale.
I think the point that you're getting to, and I, I'll say this much about it, is that we're probably going to operate in the red a little bit this year. So that has to be made up at some point. So, yeah, you do need some benefit from the revale now. How much that is, you know, I don't, I don't pretend to know. I, I expect next year's tax rate will come down dramatically. We get a big increase in tax value, that rate will come down. Will it come all the way down to revenue neutral? I don't know. I kind of doubt it. You know, like I said, everything goes up. If we don't let ourselves go up when we have a revale, then we're never going to be able to continue.
Tony, how's our fund balance?
At the end of last year, it was about 20%. Looking at this year, we probably are going to come close to break even. So it's probably going to be around that same amount. It's hard to say for sure because it, you know, until you do the math after you close the books, you don't know for sure, but I don't.
What was the fund balance several years ago? What percentage?
The last few years is the best it's been since I've been here. It's been over 20% about two, three years now.
It was down about 8% at one time.
It had gotten down close to 8%, maybe 9% several years ago.
So what's happened at the end of our budget year? Departments have not used their funds and they've returned it back to the county to where that's helped us increase our fund balance. So if, if we have a year like what we're talking about, do you feel confident that if we spend a million dollars out of our fund balance, we're, we're okay?
Yes, certainly. We just can't spend a million dollars every year.
I understand.
But for one year, it's not, we, we have plenty of reserve to cover that. It's just you can't.
Give us that hard number. I mean, it, a lot of folks don't understand that we say 20% or 8%. What's the number?
Yeah, I really don't have that with me right now, but it, it, it was probably.
We're not going to hold you to it now.
I'm going to say like 13, 14 million dollars.
It will be a test afterwards.
13, 14, and then prior to that, where were we at number wise?
When you say back when we were around 9, 10%.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's a percentage of your budget, so I mean, probably I would have been half that, maybe less.
Six or seven million?
Yeah, so. So it, it's grown and, you know, we have done well. We, we, what I always like to say is we budgeted 100% and we spend at 95%. So we have that, that cushion. Now, when we appropriate fund balance, it kind of reflects that cushion. So if you don't get the people turning money in, it don't work. But we've been fortunate, our departments have always done that.
And what's the, been the biggest investment, would you say, over the last couple of years to, to our budget?
In our people. Our salaries, merit pay, salary studies, just raises for people to, to keep good people. I think the, you know, the labor market has been such that people are making more money. There's a lot more competition for employees. I know years ago, you know, there are a lot more people wanting a job than there were jobs to go around. That's kind of flipped. Now there's like more jobs than there are people to fill them. So that just supply and demand, that makes people cost more to, to employ. But I think one good way of looking at it, this budget, our salaries and wages were up about $4 million. Our fund balance appropriation went up less than $2 million. So, you know, that shows you where the, the money went.
But you know, we've been as good as we can be to employees and we've tried and done what, I think we've been real good to them. But sometime we got to think about the people too. Like he's, my mom's sitting there drawing $1,300 a month and she's going to have to pay more property taxes and stuff too, you know? I mean, what's, what about all these people? And they decide if they're going to eat or they're going to buy their medicine or they're going to pay their taxes at the end. I mean, you know, probably $50 or $100 ain't going to make as much difference to most of us in here, but there's a lot of people it does. And you know, we got to look at, these people elect us to look after their money too.
I, I certainly feel for those people. And I would invite anybody that's listening that's in that situation to speak to Mr. Angle, our, our tax collector. He's got some programs. If you're over a certain age or an income threshold, you can get some relief on your taxes. And be happy to explain that to anybody that qualifies, you know, what they can do. We certainly want to look out for those people that, that are in that situation.
And Tony, to Mike, to Mike's question and his point, the majority of the increase has been through our, taking care of our employees and salaries and benefits and things of that nature.
Correct.
We haven't had a lot of stuff outside of that. We've had some positions at DSS, we've had some positions at Restart, but most of that's been funded from outside grants and other things.
Correct.
But there's not been a whole lot that's, that's truly hit our budget over the last several years other than salary increases. So when you start cutting, you either have to, the only way to do, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, but the only way you're going to do that is to cut a service, is to cut. You know, we, we added a lot of money last couple, a couple of years ago to our environmental health. So we got way behind on permitting. We got way behind on, you know, those things and that, we had to spend money to get that, to get that up to speed so we could provide that service. So if we cut service, then we're going to get fussed at because we ain't able to provide the service. So it's a, it is a tough balance and I agree with what Commissioner Branch is saying. I think, I think we're reaching a point in our, in our, just in our society in general where things are getting tougher and tougher. You know, I've got a son that's 22 years old who wants to buy a piece of property, who wants to buy a home. Well, he's got a really good job and making pretty dang on good money, but there's no way he can go buy a home today. There's no way he, you know, it's going to be difficult for our younger generation to, to be able to afford homes and things of that nature. So to Commissioner Branch's point, I think we do have to, to really look at areas where we can tighten the belt. And I'm convinced that there is probably some, some areas we can find a little bit. And every little bit helps.
Right.
To your point, there might be a little bit here, it might be a little bit there, but every little bit helps. And I think we are, and I, and I'm in, I'm in favor of this budget this year, but I don't want to go into next year, we got to take some hard, we're going to have to make some tough decisions next year of how do we tighten our belt and get through the future, get in, and move into the future.
Agreed.
Well, you know, it's last revale. I tried to tell people, you know, your property value is worth more, your property value, you know, you, you're worth more now. But ultimately, we raised their taxes on them. I mean, we're the ones that said, yeah, let's, we're going to take this revale and we're going to keep this money and you're, you're going to pay more money. So we, we ultimately did it. And I just think it's time to give the people a break too. And we need to figure out some way to where we ain't just planning on using all this money for, for their, I mean, for our spending purposes. I mean, would we need a courthouse right now? I mean, we're working right now. We're going, why can't we remodel a building we just bought, you know, and stuff like that? I mean, I don't understand some of this money we're spending here myself. I mean, I just, I just think there's ways to not spend it. We should have some money coming back, you know, off of debt stuff. And, you know, I think we need to look at it and take a hard look at this before we pass this budget for next year when we're going to raise taxes and take everybody, take people's money.
I can tell you this much, next year's budget, I'll do everything possible to help you get it as low as possible. I, I can't look in the future and say you can go revenue neutral or, or you can't, but I promise you to give me my best effort to get it as low as possible.
If you could give it last year, you can give it this year. We can go back and redo this thing somehow.
And I think we're probably to a point where we're about as lean as we can get to with this budget is what I understand because we're already looking at hitting fund balance.
Right.
For possibly a million dollars. But just to go back to the point of a lot of increases, I know our, our contributions in state retirement system have increased. I know our healthcare costs have increased. And those are all things that we don't really have a lot of control over, right? It gets passed along to us that we have to, to budget for. And then, I mean, who would have ever thought that, that some of the things, you know, an ambulance, remount now for an ambulance, Mr. Barlow's like $300,000. You used to could buy the whole dag on thing for that, right? So.
I bought him for 125,000.
Fire trucks have gone up to $650,000 for a fire truck. And I remember the first one I helped raise by selling barbecue chicken for, you know, we bought the thing for 65 grand and, and was very happy to get it, so.
600 gets you a basic one, by the way.
Yeah.
That's right.
So it, everything's gone up, which is reflected in our budget in, in a sense. And, and I'm, I'm all about holding the line too. I've got an elderly father that reminds me routinely, he pays too much in taxes. And, and I understand that. And so we, we want to look at it more in depth next year. And I know, and just so people are not confused, but the revale comes out in the first part of the year, then we start gearing our budget to walk. then we start gearing our budget to what those numbers are.
Correct.
And so then we approve the budget and the budget ordinance for next year based upon the revale that comes out.
Right.
So our tax division is working on that revale now and it's an ongoing process. And one other thing and point to mention is, yes, three and a half years ago, we went up, but that was the first revale we had had in over eight years. We had, we had pushed that. So now we're trying to do it every four years so we can be more equitable and more fair with all of that too. So, and early numbers, it sounds like some of our commercial properties are what's going to be increasing this time more than the residential side. So. But I too have a son that's getting ready to build a home, an 1,800 square foot home at $400,000. So it ain't cheap no more.
Certainly not.
Whatever you're doing.
Everything's gone up and I think people know that. People understand that things have gone up and it's just, it's not our fault, you know?
But you know, if you're in business, I mean, everybody that's in here that's ever been in business, if it's time to cut stuff, you can cut stuff out. You can make, you can make something happen if you want to make it happen.
And we can. Our librarian's sitting here, we can close libraries, but we'll see what happens then, right? I didn't give her, I didn't give her a heart attack, but you know. It goes hand in hand with services being cut to reduce the, the outflow of money, whatever that is.
Several years ago, we added a shift of deputies. We could cut a shift of that. We added a shift of telecommunicators, so we could cut that. I mean, there's things we cut, but then when you pick up the phone for a deputy or for an ambulance or call 911, I mean, it, you know, what, I mean, we added things several years ago and we can go back and cut those things out. You think about the fire service. I mean, they, they have to provide fire service and there's very little, some very little volunteer. Now they're having to pay. I mean, we understand what's going on in your communities. I mean, that, you guys have got a tough, tough job out there and I greatly appreciate that. But, you know, I think, you know, the, the departments this past, you know, they cut a million dollars. And my challenge is, is that, okay, we've got this year coming. Sharpen your pencil a little bit and let's see if we can't get that down, that 1.3 million dollars to something a whole lot less.
And one of the things that, and Donald can explain this more too, is we got hit with the whole, whole harmless money this year from the state for Medicaid that we never had to pay. That was 1.5, 1.5 million that.
Right.
It was a surprise.
I mean, there's your million right there that we're going to end up spending out of fund balance.
Yeah, that, that's true.
It's the 1.5 million.
Is the difference.
There's some things we just can't control. I mean, you know, when, when, when you have Medicaid, that's, I mean, we have to provide that. It's not, it's the law. We have to do it.
And you've, you've profited, not profited, but the county has not had any expense on that. Yeah, in that arrangement where the state took our sales tax to pay for that. But as we all know, healthcare costs have accelerated dramatically.
Yep.
And so because that rising healthcare cost has outpaced the growth in sales tax, even though you've had record years of sales tax growth. And it's because you've had more folks, more folks retiring, more folks needing Medicaid and Medicare. They don't have long-term healthcare plans other than that. And so the taxpayer pays for it.
Yep.
So the feds pay their share, the state pays its share and the county has to pay its share. You have no, you have no say so in that. You took the deal, it's probably saved the county overall 25 to 22 million dollars on the back of the napkin.
Yep.
But this year, because of the rising cost and we saw sales tax returning back to normal, you, you can't complete that. You know, and if, if you had fewer people retiring and you had a younger population that was all of working age and we could fill, you know, the 6,000 jobs in this valley that are open, it's almost seven now, I think, then it's a different story. But we're not, you know, we're, we are an aging population. So.
I think we are assuming that the economy is going to continue to grow and the tax revale next time is going to be significantly higher, but none of us have a crystal ball, unfortunately. We can enter into another 2008 and the whole bottom fallout and people's houses not be worth half of what they're worth right now. And then, but you've still got to provide the same amount of services that you're providing now for the citizens. So.
I think that's a good point, Commissioner Wilkie. In 2011, when we did revale in Catawba County, our, our revenue neutral was a tax increase. So imagine trying to explain that one to people. It goes the other way too.
One other thing just to mention is, you know, my axiom in, in working on this budget was that people and their salaries were off limits. We would cut other things, but we would not let go of anybody and we would not cut anybody's pay. And I feel like we've taken it as tight as we can while keeping that rule in place. I felt like to go any deeper, significantly deeper to make a difference, then we'd have to go into that. And I didn't feel like that was the wise course of action and, and I don't think you guys do either. But if you do, you know, we can look at that. But I think, you know, that was, that was the, the message I gave to department heads was that we want to keep these raises. We want to keep these people that we've worked so hard for the last couple of years. What can you do to help us reduce the budget and make that possible? And that's when they gave us almost a million dollars in cuts.
Well, if we don't take care of our people, there's not going to be anybody to provide that service.
Correct.
So I absolutely agree with you. And, and here's the thing, what we, what we're forgetting about is we're still behind. We're still behind other counties from what we, you know, from the, um, the region of what's being paid. We're still in the bottom of that group. Every time, you know, we were in the mid, mid-range and now we're in the bottom range and then we do something, we fix it and then we're back in, we get back to the mid-range, now we're back in the bottom again. So.
Seems like every time we get up, we, we get dogged back down.
That's right. So, I mean, and I want the employees to know that we're doing everything we can to try to, um, to, to combat that. But sometimes it's hard for them to understand when we, when we can't do certain things. But I think the last few years, we've been very gracious to our employees with benefits and salary increases and merit raises. Um, you know, Commissioner Branch was a big supporter of the merit raise process and I think that's been one of the best things we've put in place. It rewards our employees for doing a good job and I think that's a great thing. But it is, it's a cost, it's a costly venture when you start getting in salaries and benefits. Employee and owners out there, business owners know that your highest cost is in your staff. And it's no different here in our Caldwell County. And if we want good people, we have to pay them. If we want to keep good people, we have to pay them. Because I promise you, they can walk out of our door right now and go to any county around us and make more money. That's pretty much any position, pretty much any position in this county government, Caldwell County government, they can literally walk across the county line and make more money. So these people are staying here because they want to be here. They're staying here because of their family, their friends, they grew up here, they want to remain a part of this community. Um, and we have to keep that in mind, that it's not going to get cheaper as we go forward.
And we're not raising taxes on them all the time.
Do we still have some employees less than the $15 an hour? I mean, that was kind of a mark that was set statewide, school system and various things, but I know.
I think we have some part-time people below that.
Yes, we have a, uh, we, just this year, we passed, I think, all of our full-time staff passed $15 an hour. Before COVID, the median wage was about 1742 in North Carolina for a living wage. Now that's at almost $22 an hour.
Correct.
So we're nowhere near that and we'll, I don't think that we're going to get there yet. Another interesting point, and Josh, you can correct me on the numbers, is that on the property tax exemption for, for elderly, I believe the current numbers, if you bring in less than $35,000 a year, then you can get your taxes reduced. That number's going up to almost $38,000, $37,900. Uh, our, our paramedics don't start off at that. So just think about that. We don't even, we don't even pay our own people the, what's considered the poverty line.
You ask, you ask any business owner, he'll tell you that he's paying a lot more money today to keep his health and to get help. Also, one thing to note is, it ain't been just a few years ago, and this is embarrassing to say this, but we had county employees who were having to get benefits from DSS and the Health Department. They actually qualified for benefits. I don't know if that's the case today, but there was one time where that was happening pretty regularly. And I don't know if, again, I don't know where we are there today, but let's, I hope that we don't have our county employees who are having to reach out to DSS and the Health Department for services for their family.
Also, you have several representatives from your fire departments here tonight. If you would like to invite them to say anything about their request increases in funding. I can bring up that slide.
I'll ask if anyone, any one of you want to, we're not going to make you. But if you, if somebody wants to come up here and brag on your fire department and everything you're doing, you're certainly welcome to. We know you're doing a lot. And just quite frankly, our EMS staff couldn't function without you.
Correct.
We, we know that.
Yeah.
I've been there, so I understand it very well. So, uh, but, you know, come on, chief.
He got dressed up tonight, so we're going to put him up here.
Chiefs come up.
Yeah, tell us what this volunteerism or lack of is, is doing to you guys. Cause I know it's, if it's in one department, it's, it's all across, all across. And I think the people need to understand what, what you guys and ladies are dealing with in, in your communities.
My name's Stephen Watson. I'm with Kings Creek Fire Department. We're, we're going to, we're going to go up because just like I said, volunteers are, are pretty much a thing of the past. We're going to go 24-hour staffing. The quicker response time leads equals more lives saved. A quicker, one paid member per NC DOI equals three volunteers. So that'll help us on our, our NC, uh, what is it?
ISO rating.
Yeah. We have less volunteers living close to the station or even in the district. Increase part-time pay to, to our $1 hour, which Caldwell County and us two, we're well below $15 an hour. It's a part-time job. Providing better tools and equipment. KCFD plans to increase staffing from 10 hours a day to 24 hours per day. 24-hour staffing will consist of one part-time employee working per shift. Pay, pay staff will be paid $14 an hour. That's with an add, add a cost, announced 13. Let's see here. In 2020, we bought turnout gear. Do you know how much turnout gear is to sit?
About 6,000. Tell us.
In 2020, it was $12,340.
Yep.
The new quote for 2024 is $19,900.
Is that per?
That's per.
So seven, seven thousand dollars a year.
In, in four, three years.
Three years.
From 2020 to 24.
Okay. 2023, uh, is 3,000, is, I'm sorry here, 3,682. So, and we have to replace five sets per year. Cause they're only good for 10 years. NFPA. Our, our packs, 2020, our packs was $6,008. In 2023, this is for one, 2023, $9,850. There's minimum of four on a truck. So that's a 39% increase. Our trucks in 2020, you could get a, a truck for $289,000, basic. No, everything right now, 2023, $900,000. It's a 73 to 80% increase. Our fuel cost, our fuel costs, you know, everything goes up. Our fuel cost, it hurts us all. The utilities, 2021, 2022, we spent $5,200 in, in fuel cost. And 2022, 2023, we spent $7,200. The, the reason requesting our, our funding here is for staffing. Somebody will be there 24/7. Somebody's going to be there. When you pick up that phone, call 911, somebody will be there. There won't be no second alarms, nothing like that. Just like you said, while I go, you know, eliminating the tele, uh, telecommunicators. At what cost? If you're going to start cutting stuff, what cost is that going to be to, to the public? And everybody, you know, fusses and grouts about taxes until you start cutting stuff and then they're going to blame you for the death of a loved one. A property valued with, with our increase, which is posted over there, a property valued in Kings Creek Fire District at $233,971 would only see an increase of $10 per month. So. KCFD would like to thank our citizens for the support in our organization. We'd appreciate your support in the future. And we did have a annual meeting last August. And our, our community are the ones who voted on this. They wanted 24/7 coverage because they want to make sure somebody is there. And I don't blame them. I do too. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, I think you're feeling the same thing everybody is, is instead of cutting staff, you're having to add staff.
Absolutely.
Cause the demand's there.
Volunteers are down. And just like you said, you go across the bridge, you go up the mountain, you're going to get pay raises. So it's hard to find part-time people, but when we do got them, we need to, we need to hold on to them.
Y'all do a great job. Super appreciative to what you guys do out there. To what Chairman Church said earlier, you know, not only we're appreciative from an individual standpoint, but the county appreciates you guys because we literally could not do it. EMS could not function the way it functions today without you. That, not just your department, that's all of our departments. They're a necessity. They're not, they're not an option. They're a necessity.
Exactly. And you know, you said, while you had to, her point up there, we train with our, our neighboring departments. It's to the point now where, you know, we have to help each other. We have to rely on it.
Right.
So if we have somebody there 24/7, that's going to be a blessing to not only Kings Creek community, but the communities that join us too.
Correct.
You know, a lot of people don't realize this, but every fire department has their own board.
Absolutely.
It's not, I mean, they bring it before us, but every community has their own board of peers. So they are the ones that decide this stuff. Your board gets together and decides what you need and how to raise it.
Our community voted on this.
Yeah, every community.
Yeah, it was. And our board, uh, the community voted on it and they, we had a vote last August and we're just here to see it through.
I just, I want to thank you too, but I, it's worth noting that you're trying to provide one person at the station for that 24-hour coverage. That one person can respond to equipment, get it checked and routed. But to Commissioner LaBrosse's point, then the other volunteers have to come along to be able to augment and, and support that. So, you know, as an example, a car accident on Highway 18 in the Kings Creek community, the firefighter that's there can respond to that equipment, but it takes a whole host of people to do extrication and get somebody out.
Yeah, with somebody, with somebody being at the station, you don't have to pass the car.
Right. You know, and that's true too. You're, you're getting a vehicle there.
Yeah.
But we're still relying on volunteer fire departments and volunteer firefighters. And so anybody that hears this, it's a public service announcement. If you want to help your community and be an impact in your community, go join your volunteer fire department. They can use you somewhere.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and, and we advocate for that. And so, but we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
And I think I seen Mr. Barlow coming. He's always got something to talk about. The Valmead Fire Rescue.
First of all, I want to, I want to thank the commissioners for all you do to support our local fire and rescue departments throughout the county, because without your support, we all know that it would be a different world and, and it would be a bigger burden to the taxpayers without the local fire departments, the local volunteers that we have. So we're trying to provide that service for our communities, to help the community and, and to keep, as Commissioner Branch said, from raising taxes. I want to talk a few minutes and I won't bore you with a lot of details. And I, I know Mr. Watson hit a lot of the, the costs and how they've, you know, expanded through the years. But at Valmead, um, we're, we're a little different in, in our budget each year and what it takes to run our department. Valmead Fire Department runs on a budget currently of less than 200. Valmead Fire Department runs on a budget currently of less than $200,000 a year. And of that 200, and I'm saying 200, the actual number is about 178,624. So of that 178,000, 41% of that is now dedicated to payroll on a volunteer department. And, uh, you know, to echo Mr. Watson's comments, it's not a strictly volunteer fire department anymore. We've had to go out and provide that service and pay for that service for the community so that when you dial 911, you've got an engine coming. And I want to commend the commissioners for adding emergency services and the response from emergency services when we need them. Because in Valmead's, in Valmead's district, that is a huge help for us to know on a house fire, on a extrification of a, a vehicle, that once that lead truck gets there, we have personnel coming from the county. And, and luckily where we're positioned in the county, coming very quickly. You know, southern ends of the county and way northern end of the county, it's, it's harder for those folks to get there just because of logistics part of it. But you know, in Valmead's district, we're getting the response in less than five minutes. And that's, that's a critical time. Just to speak a minute about the fire tax. Currently at that 178 number, um, we're at a 10 cent. And we're asking to go to 15 cent this year. Couple reasons. Number one, um, one cent in our district only creates $16,000 in revenue. So in the $16,000, and I think Tony, you, you can attest to this, but we're looking at 90% of our number to be collected. Was it 97? Okay. So, so really of that 16,000, we're not looking at 16,000. Best case scenario, we're round numbers, 15 grand. In the 15, in the, in the 15,000, the three cent will, you know, that's 45. We're looking that with that 45,000, we need to provide a weekend service to where, right now, we have 8:00 AM to 4:00 during the day, Monday through Friday, of paid people at Valmead. At 4:00 PM, we're starting to gain some of our volunteer folks to come back that will relieve the folks that are on, on the payroll. So we're wanting to put on a weekend service for the community with that extra $45,000. We're also looking to raise the rescue tax. We're currently at 0.02, we want to go to 0.03, and that's reflected in that 45,000. Last year of Valmead Fire ran 474 calls and I'm glad to say that every single time we had people show up. We're, we have a, a great, a great, uh, staff out there as far as chiefs, officers and, and to give a shout out to all of our volunteers. They do a fantastic job. But to keep this service provided, we have to go to the weekends. We have to keep providing that service from 8 to 4 during the week. And as I said in the beginning, that's over 40% of our budget. Now, we also have a new tanker that is, is supposed to be delivered in March 2025. As you know, uh, some of y'all know, I know Robbie and Randy, y'all are very familiar with how long it takes to get a fire truck ordered now. This one's been ordered for about 18 months. When that truck arrives, that's $525,000. So now we're looking to pay for a new truck. We're looking to run our department, buy our turnout gear, buy our, our air packs on less than $200,000. And I'm just telling you, it's tough. It's very tough. So, again, I want to thank you for what you do. I want to thank you for your support and just know that, uh, this money is, is being well-spent and it is providing a service to the county that, uh, our, our citizens deserve. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Chief Wilson's coming. Don't forget to tell me where my fire tax money is going.
We tax you and you. And me. Don't forget, we tax me too.
That's right.
Again, I'll, I'll be brief, they've covered a lot of the detail, but thank you for having us, uh, letting us come and tell our story just briefly and tell about our department. As you know, we asked for a tax increase last year and this year, which is uncommon for Sawmills. But as I mentioned earlier, last year, when we started this process and we hired a, say, chief position, filled a chief position, we knew that our goal was to get full-time staffing at Sawmills Fire. And so at this time last year, we had, besides the chief, we had three full-time people there. So we had one per rotating shift for the 24 hours. So to, to get to our goal of having two full-time people per shift, we added three additional people this year. And that's the reason for the penny increase on the fire and a penny increase on the rescue. Was that, for us, that generates about $90,000 total, about 45 per penny, 45, 48 per penny. So that gives us enough money to, uh, fund most of three people. Not quite, but most of three people. This time when we hired, we did hire people that did not have, we didn't require experience this time. So we hired in a little less money, but also now we have to send them for training and certification. So we're, we still use some of our part-time people to fill in those daytimes when they're gone to school during the day or whatever their, their shift requires. So that's the reason for the increase for Sawmills. It, uh, gives us two people 24 hours. So when we ride out at night, they're not by themselves going into homes and places that they go. And also another thing, I don't have facts and figures on it, but, uh, we run a lot of calls, uh, two at a time. We have, we have a call, while we're still on the call, we have that second call. We do that quite often. I think it runs in about the 15% range, which is, which is quite a bit.
Yep.
So what they'll do, sometimes they'll run, if there's an additional person at the station, they'll maybe respond the first squad or the engine, and then they'll run a second truck just in case they catch a call the, the next time. So one thing we've done at Sawmills in the last couple of years, and we kind of followed a pattern from another department, is when we bought our last, our last engine, which is a rescue squad truck, and we call it Squad 40, we run it almost everything we have. So the men are outfitted and fully, whatever call they have, they can handle with that truck. Seems a little bit odd to send that to a house call, but once they get there, if they have another call or something else, they're prepared and their turnout gear ready and they're, they're ready to run. So that helps eliminate the need for that second truck coming out sometimes. So we've done that. So that's how we've tried to grow in the last couple of years with the full-time staffing. So again, that'll give us two per shift. Then we have a, have a paid captain now, which works a full-time shift. And he takes in for the PTO time, he takes in vacation, whatever they do. Or when there's an extra job to do, part-time, he's, he's there for that. So we have, we have that and still have a lot of part-time people that we use occasionally as we need those. So that's the reason for our budget. And, uh, so we have, we have a, a larger budget than some, not nearly as much as others, but, uh, we do have a little bit larger budget. And we watch it closely. We, uh, we, we spend it as frugal as we can. And it's like, you know, same, same heartburn you have up here, it's your employees and that it just takes a lot of money for that. And we've got good employees and again, they can cross the bridges and make more money. So they want to work in this area, so we're glad to have them for that. And, uh, I would say that, and all we say about paid and volunteer, you know, again, you have to commend our volunteers for what they can give. We have to always commend those volunteers. We have a pretty good number of volunteers. The reality is they're aging out, the young are not, not coming for that. But, uh, we do have a good number of that. And without those, we couldn't make it at all, we'd, we'd be that way. Also, uh, our neighboring departments, well, none of our immediate neighbors are out here, but we work together really well on mutual aids and automatic aids. You know, we're always sending trucks there, they're sending trucks to us. So that helps keep down the need for personnel to, with, on fire alarms and things like that that's maybe just a couple of people calls. So that's the reason for our increase. We're well aware of where our tax rate is. We do have board meetings every month and we're constantly, our treasurer's, you know, senior, and, uh, every month he brings it to us. We know, we know where we're at financially, we're solid, we're good, we have money in reserves. But this tax increase this year would almost fully fund us for a year without having to go into reserves. We don't want to, don't want to have money, we don't need, but we want to be sure we're fully funded and not, uh, not mislead ourselves into what we can or can't do. So that's the reason for the Sawmills tax increase this year. We know, I say, we know where we're at, uh, hopefully we'll not be back for a while. Cause our, our goal has been met to get the full-time staffing to two per shift with, with us nine persons.
And I want to, I want to add something while you're there too. And it's not worth noting for all of our volunteer departments, but many of them have spent this additional money for, uh, better equipment and more personnel, which in turn reduces their ISO rating. And I think Sawmills maybe just went through a rating and got that reduced, as many of our departments have. And what that does is, uh, it saves you homeowners insurance costs. So many times you see a, maybe an increase in your fire tax, but you see a decrease in your homeowners because your fire department's better prepared and better equipped to be able to meet your needs. So I want to make that a mention. And I think countywide, about all of our departments have reduced their fire rates tremendously.
Since I've been here, I think it's almost, I think it's almost every department.
We're, we're at a four.
Yeah, straight four.
And to get that, it's a little different than it was. We had a straight four prior, but when they came this time, if you're over 1,000 feet from a hydrant, you had to do a water shuttle.
Right.
A water hole. So some of our residents actually picked up a higher, uh, insurance bill temporarily till we got the board back down. Cause my, my mother was one of them.
Right.
Hers, hers fell right in the line and she got pinged for about 80 more dollars.
Yeah.
And then on one property. And then she just told me today, she said, I got a refund back because they lowered it back down to four.
Right.
I think she got 70 some dollars back. So seniors would, you know.
And that, that's big.
That's big.
For our residents too, that.
It is big.
Our fire departments and, and it takes hours and training and all the things that goes into that. People just do not realize. So I just challenge people, go join.
Yeah.
Just join up, be a part of the solution, right?
I tell them all the time to come in store. If they see us, I say, go, we'll take you.
So one of the things I was gonna mention, and I think some of y'all, we've all hit on a little bit, but, um, not picking on the fact that you're a little older than some of these other guys.
A little, a lot older than all of them.
Yeah. You know, you go back from the time you first got in the fire department, I remember back in the eighties when I was involved in the fire department and the siren, the whistle would go off and we'd have a house fire, we'd have a wreck, and they'd be almost too many people there. We'd be tripping over each other. And now, we could, we used to, we could handle any, pretty much any call that came up with just our department. Now, that's almost impossible. And I noticed that over the last several years, that seems to be increasing. And I think you made a point a while ago, is that, you know, you're dependent upon the agency that's closest to you, mutual aid. And now when they, the dispatch on a house fire, they automatically dispatch three agencies, right?
Yeah. Oh yeah, three and more, some of them have more.
Yeah, because we don't, the, the volunteerism just isn't there anymore. You don't have that person showing up. And obviously you can't afford, from a, from a revenue standpoint, you can't afford to staff a full-blown, full-time, you know, 24/7 fire department. So it's going to continue to be a challenge, I guess is what I'm, I'm getting to.
Sawmills district, you know, we have very few people that actually work in the district during the daytime.
Correct.
That's available to run a call.
Yeah, that's a big part.
I remember when I was growing up in the fire service, they would let us leave work. If I worked, you know, I worked on a farm growing up and we could leave work and go to the call, you know.
You're just talking about age. The sad reality is when we call for mutual, for extra help, a second alarm.
Yep.
They get me.
Yeah, that's right.
And I'm thinking, this is not where we're headed.
Yeah.
But it's, it's the reality is what we get, you know.
That's right.
Told you a few times.
A lot of our employers don't allow employees to leave now. Because they're, they're so streamlined and if this fellow leaves or this young lady leaves to go fight a fire, then, then they can't function properly.
Slows down the whole process, yeah.
A lot of folks don't, don't allow that anymore, so.
It's a challenge for all of us.
Yes, sir.
It's painful for everybody. We're right there with the rest of them.
We appreciate you.
We appreciate what you can do and help us.
Thank you, guys.
So this time, we'll not be back next year because we, we're, we're gonna cap out and be careful. But this does fully fund us where our goal was to be, so.
Right, yes, sir.
Keep up the great work, we appreciate you.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All these guys have talked, I would like to clear up something too. I've had, over the past several years, I've had a lot of people say, are, are you guys going to become a countywide fire department? Let me just clean that rumor up right now. Hell no, we ain't doing that. We, we want to support you, it's all we can, because we don't want no, no part of taking over any fire departments.
And, and as we go forward, I'm gonna challenge the commissioners because we're gonna have to look for more ways to help you. I don't know what it looks like today, but we're gonna have to have that conversation. We gotta, we're gonna have to do more to keep you, to keep you there. Cause when that, when they dial 911, whether it's a medical, whether it's a house fire, what it is, they expect you to show up. So we're gonna have to have that conversation.
Yeah.
I can promise you're getting a bargain right now.
Oh, yeah.
You dang on right, we are. We know we are. But we're gonna have to have that conversation sooner than later. Of what else we can do for you.
All right.
Well, it's all, it's all about a balance.
Yeah.
And I sit back there, I sit here and I look at Ashley there, our EDC, and about all the economic development. And that's what we've got to continue to push because the more economic development, the more house, housing that's being built, then that generates that tax dollar to where we don't have to put that burden on the tax, on the taxpayer. So keeping that, uh, engine running on all eight cylinders and really adding to our tax base, that's what the key is. And that's what this county has done over the, over the years. We've continued to add to our economic base, increasing our tax base to where we can afford some of these things that we have spent over the years. And along with the sales tax, the point of sale, sales tax, there's a lot of things that have, that have helped us. We've got to continue to, uh, work on that to where we maximize our benefit there, to where then we can help with the services and provide the services for all of our citizens. You know, I've, I've, I've been on this commission for a while and, and I believe that I've been as frugal as I can be. Maybe never, everybody agrees and that's okay. We, we can agree to disagree. But I know that this county is much better off because of the group of us and our leadership than we've been in the past. And isn't that what it's all about? Providing a, a good place for our folks to live, to work, to worship, to recreate, all those, all those things that go into Caldwell County. And we're, we're so proud of that. Have, have, uh, we've made some missteps, sure, don't we all? But I think the bottom line is, is I think we have a better county. I think that we are a conservative county. There's a lot of other counties that have a lot of wants. We don't get a lot of wants. We, we take care of our needs. I can tell you about a lot of counties that spend money like crazy. But we've, we've never been able to do that. Not that we even would want to do that, because we just don't have the resources. And I think this commission and past commissions have taken that into consideration along with our leadership. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Donald, uh, for, for the leadership. Thank you, department heads, for your leadership. Yeah, do we have our work cut out for us this time around? Sure. But we can do it, we can rise to the occasion. This is not the first or won't be the last time we come to a, last year of a revolve, where we just kind of glide in. It's happened before, it'll be okay. Three years ago, 2,500 signs were put out against me and Donnie Potter about the tax increase. That hurt, but when I had an opportunity to talk to the citizens one-on-one, to explain to them, most of them agreed, some of them didn't. And that's okay. That's democracy, that's America, and it's okay. But know this, that I will be as frugal as possible, but I want to take, make sure we take care of our citizens, to take care of that aging population that we have out there, those folks that need our services. We're gonna be there for you and we're gonna take care of our employees and we're gonna do the right thing. So I, I approve this, I will approve this budget with the challenge that, uh, our county manager and our deputy county managers and our department heads will, uh, go back, sharpen the pencil, and if there's something that we can, we can cut and look at, then we'll will go back, sharpen the pencil, and if there's something that we can, we can cut and look at, then we'll do that, and we'll be okay. All right, that's all, that's enough.
All right. Very well. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak on behalf of the fire departments or any other part of the budget in this public hearing? All right. I'm old to near going once, going twice. Do I hear a motion that we come out of the public hearing?
Say move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And then that brings us to our adoption of the fiscal year budget ordinance, and what we've been discussing for a good little bit here. And so, do you have anything else further you need to say?
I do wanna commend Kings Creek, too. They kept us surprised of their budget process throughout the whole date. They let us know every time they were having a meeting, they give us consistent updates. They were easy to ask questions of, so just kudos to them for the extra effort they went to with their community.
Yes, sir. All right, so with Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fire department's budget, but I'm gonna vote against the fiscal year budget.
So, can we pull that out separately, or?
No, it's all together.
We have to do it all under the budget ordinance?
You have to set the tax rate at one time.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, duly noted that you're supporting the fire departments.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So, do I hear a motion that we adopt this twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget ordinance? I'll make the motion that we adopt it, and do I have any other discussion or comment on that? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And so, that budget amendment carries, the ordinance does, four to one vote. So, I appreciate everyone's opinions and presentations this evening, and all the staff and the work that went into getting us to this point. And we leave that, as Commissioner LaBrosse said, a challenge going into next year, because we're gonna have to sharpen the pencils and try to be as frugal as we can with all the things that are going on, so. But we do appreciate everyone's position in that. So, next would be a resolution to adopt our twenty-four, twenty-five fee schedule. I think we've had some looks at that pretty in-depth, and do you wanna say anything about those?
Well, as you saw, your departmental revenues was twenty-four percent of your total revenue. So, those are fee-based, user-based fee revenues, and so, it's half as much as your tax base, so think about it like that. You can change the schedule fees throughout the year. In the past, cities and counties did it by ordinance, and so, you have to go back to the whole ordinance process. It's gonna ask us to change all that, and so did LGC, because as the economy changes, you can change your schedule fees, you can be a little bit more nimble. So, if you wanted to change that, you know, every month, it's feasible to do that. But we don't do that unless there's some type of emergency or there's a law change throughout the state. So, your schedule fees there reflects, you know, what it costs us for services in the health department, what it costs us to run copies, fire inspections, build inspections, all of those things, water rates. And so, you adopt those by resolution with your annual budget.
All right. So, I'll make a motion that we adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five fee schedule. Is there any other comment or discussion in that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. Next, we have with us Jonathan Cook, and he's gonna come and speak to us just a little bit about ambulance franchise agreement with Miller Transport, at which point we'll have to have a public hearing, but I was gonna allow you, Jonathan, just give us a little background before we open that, that public hearing up.
Yes, sir. Appreciate y'all having us again. Just a little bit of background before, I did have Dr. Lowery here, I think he might have stepped out.
He had to run out.
Yeah, had to step out, he was gonna come in and help as well talk. But a little bit of background knowledge is, North State Medical was initially contracted and with a franchise agreement. They have talked to the hospital, they approached them, and are backing out effective at the end of this month. So, they're no longer gonna be there to be doing transports out of the facility. With the increased call volume still on the nine-one-one side, I feel it's the best interest to get someone back in there. Miller Transportation, Miller Ambulance Company, this is Gary Miller, he's the owner of the company. He's been in contact and talks with both us and as well as Caldwell Memorial Hospital, UNC Caldwell now. He's talked to Dr. Lowery and Heather Foss, both, they're working towards getting a contract together as well to adopt, to allow them to come in there. Miller has a pretty expensive background history. I've actually used them before when I was actually shift captain on a truck, and we were too busy to, at the time, to take people out of town to Charlotte or Baptist. I've actually had our dispatch call them and use them before, so they're pretty well-known in our area. They have some, you're operating out of Hickory, correct, with Frye Hospital or Duke, or Frye-Duke Life Point and several others. And I'll let Mr. Miller give you a little bit of a background on the company as well.
Well, good evening, my name is Gary Miller, Miller Ambulance Service. The corporate name is Cape Fear Regional Transport, and I won't go into all the details. Miller is a DBA of that. We started the ambulance portion in two thousand sixteen. We're headquartered in Yadkinville. I have a seven thousand square foot facility. Come December, we'll have been in that, can't believe it, five years I've built it. It's my beach home, my mountain home, my retirement home. We are an S corp, so I am for profit, so we need to be transporting people. My trucks really can't be sitting around. We have, I have one truck that is contracted to Northern Regional Hospital. My medical director is Dr. Jason Edsall, he happens to be the chief medical director there. We put that truck on their dock for twelve hours to do exclusive for Northern Regional, with a lot of their traffic going down to a higher level of care down to Winston-Salem. We just signed a contract to do the same thing with Frye Regional Hospital, and we put the truck on site May thirteenth. And about the end of April is when Caldwell had reached out to us to come up and talk with them, meeting with their COO tomorrow to finalize that contract. We will put a truck on their site to do exclusive for them. And of course, the franchise is needed to do point-to-point within the county. My business model was based on what we call, or I call long distance, meaning we would depart the county of pickup and pick up that part of the market that EMS couldn't do. You know, most counties do not want their trucks leaving unless they have to, because when that truck leaves the county, they go down a truck, and all the others have to move in to cover. So, that's the, the market that we do. Don't really have a lot of other things to share unless you have some questions for me. I will say that with Caldwell, it's a UNC facility, I am an East Carolina alum.
Dad, I was gonna ask you, because it makes sense, because you told me.
And there's a pirate on the back of each of my trucks. I have, one of my sons is a Tar Hill, and I told him, I don't know how I'm gonna do it, son, I might have to paint one of my trucks Carolina blue, but I'll put a pirate on there somewhere. Are there any questions of me, gentlemen?
I'd like to mention, Dr. Lowery's been heavily involved in this process of trying to get the contract, and they're very close on contract negotiations, we should have that. This is, requires two readings, by the way, you'll have this again at the next month. So, we should have that in hand by then, and it's been very positive from both the hospital's standpoint and the county's, just really good working relationship so far. We look forward to having them here.
All right. Well, with that presentation, I'll
Uh, Dr. Snyder's in the back, too, if you have any questions of him, he may. Do you have any comments, our medical director? Sorry.
Oh, you just wanting to hide back there.
He's hiding behind the fence, because now he's lost so much weight.
Yeah, I know.
He looks great, man.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. You know, I'll kinda speak for, Dr. Lowery stepped out, but, and also I'm out in emergency positions. As you guys know, we staff the emergency department at Caldwell. I think this is great, we need this. I think having some stability within this kind of market, as Mr. Miller was saying, is extremely important. And I think, as some of you and I have talked privately, that necessarily didn't always exist over the last year or so. And so, from everything I have been involved with, I know Jonathan's been very involved with, Trevor's been very involved with this process. I know Dr. Lowery's been instrumental in making this happen. I think this is a really positive step forward. As many of you know, I started as a paramedic in Maryland, whereby law, under COMAR, you know, Maryland's regulation, nine-one-one ambulances cannot do inter-facility transports, it's very rare. And it was done that way to prevent this sort of problem, which is to not have your local nine-one-one services being pulled out to do these type of almost commercial transports. And so, that's the system I was familiar with. I've certainly been involved in other systems in both Pennsylvania and South Carolina that are like here in North Carolina. But I think the burden that has been sometimes put on, you know, our system to do that has been extensive in the past. And so, the fact that we have someone who's stepping up, wanting to do this, and be kinda scheduled and dedicated to the hospital, I think is excellent. I know my partners and I at MEP are profoundly excited about the possibility of having that. I also know that the county has stepped up and is gonna try to meet those needs when they cannot, which I think is a really important olive branch right now with the hospital, and I've said that multiple times. And I really, a lot of credit to Dr. Lowery for, I think, kinda meeting us halfway and trying to really fix this relationship in a positive way. So, I don't think I have any downside to this, I'm all for it. If you guys have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them from a medical director's standpoint, but I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, if I may, I left off a very important point. We are ALS, Advanced Life Support, and we will have a ventilator, we do vent traffic. We do about ten to twelve trips a month for select specialty hospital out of Greensboro and Kendrick. Both of those are vent, ventilator specialty hospitals. And so, we will have the vent capacity to move ALS patients, so it will be an ALS truck.
And you may not, or Jonathan may not, I'm just wondering this question, but how far will you travel? I mean, I
How much money do you have? We have
I've seen it in West Virginia.
It's a serious question, and I was joking. We've been, well, just last, last week, we went down to Orlando on a private plane.
Yeah, I was thinking I'd heard some of that travel.
We've gone to the Bronx, we've gone up to the Great Lakes. I think the farthest we went, we took a patient to Dallas. Patient couldn't fly, a young person couldn't fly. Two hours after we got there, that patient went into surgery, so we had, we had a three-man crew and had to book straight for that. So, we'll go, we go as far as, as
Yes, sir.
Makes sense.
And that, and that answers my question to an extent, but because once he's gone, right, we're backfilling that. So, if he's gone to Orlando for a twelve- or fourteen-hour run, then that brings us up to the table.
Yeah, we're actually currently, what we're doing a little bit with that, with us, if they're not available or they're on a call, if there's a true emergency that comes out, you know, we're willing to take, we don't wanna delay that care to go to another facility. The majority of these patients, though, if it's a true emergency, will end up being flown by air medical.
Right.
Or you've got other critical care services right around the area that can take that. And then, if they're not available, say the weather's bad, it's rainy, you got multiple people out, then yes, we would fall in line. We're actually working with the hospital right now, actually have a meeting set up Wednesday with them to help narrow this down and design it a little bit more better.
Right.
To knock that out.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do a long-distance trip like that with the branded, what I call the branded truck. We would use a Miller truck. Because there has to be, if there's an overnight stay, there's gotta, a lot of stuff goes into that.
Right, yes, sir.
That truck would stay anytime we can keep it, or we would try to rotate a truck up.
I got you.
Because again, I want to transport.
Yeah.
So, I guess a branded truck will have the hospital's logo and things like that, correct? Is that what you're saying by branded trucks?
Yes, um, the, the one, the, as you gentlemen know how lead times are going, I have one that's just being finished, but I had promised that to Hickory. And so, the one that would become, I mean, I have an existing truck that will be here, but the one that would be actually branded is probably about twelve months away. And that's simply because it's, I mean, I've got the drawings, we've approved them, and now we're
Yeah.
waiting to get in line.
Yeah, I understand. We're glad to have you here. Well, thank you, sir.
So, with all that, I guess we're gonna let y'all sit down, because we gotta do this official thing. Were we open now the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
So, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone else here that would like to speak to this or this issue. And if not, I'll declare that public hearing closed and ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in adopting this ambulance franchise agreement with Miller Transport.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the the amended, the amendment ordinance for medical services with Miller Transport.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Then we have an ordinance amendment for our emergency medical services ordinance, so our county manager, Mr. Duncan.
Yes, sir, just a point of order, the last one, just to correct that motion, was you're approving the franchise agreement for the first reading.
Okay.
And so, now we're gonna amend the ordinance.
Amend the ordinance, okay.
Correct, yeah, we just adopted this ordinance at the prior meeting, and the legal counsel we had that was advising us to say, you know, if you have a wreck now, there's some fault, it's very expensive, so you should consider raising your rates. Well, we did, and then we realized we're actually putting Miller under a burden higher than what we had, and it's counter to our insurance provider's recommendation of a million dollars per occurrence and two million for a year collectively. So, we're asking just to return it back to the way it was on our insurance premiums for them to provide service. And so, I think that's fair to them and to us as well, and follows our policy for our insurance provider.
Yeah.
And you have to read this one twice as well, this will come up again next month.
So, here in the explanation for the ordinance amendment, do I hear a motion that we adopt this amendment?
I make a motion we adopt the amendment.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us then to acceptance of bid offer for patrol vehicles. And I think I saw Captain Rich here come in, yes, sir. So, you're, you're on our agenda as speaking to this. You wanna come say something? Well, just tell us what you're gonna do, how many you're gonna buy? And are they gonna be black?
They are gonna be black.
Okay, all right. Does that cost more money?
It'll be about three thousand more, no, the black color doesn't cost more money.
We're fixing to vote for white one.
Y'all was about to get white cars.
But these, these were three vehicles that were on last year's budget that we haven't been able to get, just because they're not producing any.
Yeah.
And since that quote from last year, what you approved was thirty-nine thousand dollars for last year's budget, these are gonna cost forty-two thousand dollars. So, it's about a three thousand dollar increase, which is almost a year and a half since we had a quote.
Right.
But Ford didn't build any twenty-two-four Explorers, unless the people who ordered twenty-two-threes didn't get their order. Luckily, they thought we didn't get our twenty-two-threes, so we got five coming. But the other three, nobody could fill. And we had a, we had to do an open bid, because OC Welch was the only one that had more than three vehicles. And he was the only one that bid on that open bid, for the formal bid.
All right.
But we're not asking for anything, anything extra.
Right.
And we already have the radios and the upfits have already been approved by this, by this board.
Everybody understands all that?
Mm-hmm.
We've had to change suppliers, I guess, to get these.
Yes.
In, in the synopsis, so. All right, so with that, do I hear a motion that we accept the bid offer for these three vehicles?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we accept the bid offer for the three patrol vehicles.
All right, any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. So, thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Next is a discussion about a lease agreement that we have for our Hyatt Rock Mountain Communications Tower that we can't do without.
We cannot, nor can the state, nor can about anybody in Western North Carolina. That is the most traffic viper tower in the state. We have a partnership with the state where we have a lease on the ground, we use our VHF communications. They supply assets to it. Also, adjacent to us is the city of Lenore and Blue Ridge Energy. So, it's, it's a valuable piece, it's high ground for the southern end of the county. And the lease expired twenty-twenty-two. And so, we need to renew it, we're asking for a twenty-year extension to take it all the way out from June thirty-four to twenty-twenty-four. And we also, in the next item is we need to, actually, item ten, we need to do a lease payment adjustment, because five years ago, when there was supposed to be a lease payment adjustment, nobody did it, they didn't catch it, we didn't catch it. So, as part of the good faith negotiations, we owe them approximately fifteen thousand five hundred dollars in leased different payments over the five years. So, I recommend you adopt this lease. It does have a clause out for both of us, if we, if technology changes, if something were to happen and we start communicating via satellite, or whatever it is, or, you know, we're using Starlink. We do have a way to get out of it, in the old contracts you didn't, so I think that's fair, because who knows what the technology's gonna be in ten years? I can't tell you.
Is Mr. Diggs gonna let us up and down the road to get to it?
We have, yes, sir, in the court order, the county and all of the providers on that mountain have clear right-of-way, including North County Forest Service.
All right.
Now, I can't say that for anybody else.
Very well. So, do I hear a motion that we adopt this lease agreement for the Hyatt Rock Mountain Communication Tower?
I make a motion that we I make a motion that we approve the lease agreement for the Hyatt Mountain Tower.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. And next is, uh- Did you carry both them together, the ten and-
No, I'll ask that you take all those with consent, but I just wanted to bring it up. Thank you, sir. Good catch.
All right. Uh, our ordinance amendment, uh, dealing with racetracks and drag strips. So give us a little background there, sir.
Yes, sir. There was a request to review the amendment for racetracks, which we just, uh, adopted last month as well, to, uh, allow for test and tune events. These are, these are events where there would not be an audience. It would just be, uh, cup teams or professional teams coming in and doing modifications to vehicles, running a few laps, shutting them down. Um, and then testing and making adjustments, uh, more mechanical work. So there will not be a crowd. There will not be, uh, money taken at the gate other than the teams renting the facility to do this. It would be up to four times per month during the weekdays, uh, from, uh, ten AM to four PM, which is kind of the normal working because a lot of the teams travel out of Mooresville. They have to have time to travel and have to get back, you know, before the end of shift. And then also there's no, uh, testing and tuning during the month of May, which were already expired during, uh, end of grade testing, things like that, those weeks. So we're not disturbing the students. And this does expire. It has have a, what we call a sunset. So at the end of the race season, if they have, uh, followed the rules and they've done well, uh, you guys can extend it if you wish, or you can let it expire if, as a retraction, so.
All right. So I'll open that up for any discussion, if anybody has any comment or question about it.
Mr. Chairman, I do have several comments about this. Um, first of all, the racetrack received a grant for four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That came from the state. Uh, it's taxpayer money. Um, they spent three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars on lighting, and they spent eighty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-three cent on improvements. There's a remaining balance of the information I received, um, and you all did to seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cent. Um, in the past, we have allowed the, uh, racetrack to have two additional special permit days, and we did that in a good faith effort that they would work to reduce the noise at the track. And we always said, if they would reduce the noise, then we would have, allow them potential to have extra days to do, um, these additional racing, um, trials and, and, uh, operate that track. In doing this, they're asking to expand their hours to two more days a week. Now, the racetrack is a privately owned business. Uh, it's not a government agency. It's, it's, uh, a privately owned business. Other privately owned businesses in this county, if they want to expand, they either have to come out of pocket with the money or they have to go to the bank and borrow money. Every other commercial business we got in county, that's the way that works. The taxpayers have already provided four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax dollars to the racetrack. No other privately owned business gets that kind of money. The golf courses that we have here, they don't get that kind of money. I'm sure they'd like to have some money to do the cart pass. Our, our, even our local Optimus parks that provide our kids opportunities to play ball, they, they barely scrape by sometime. Have to charge three dollars a person for somebody to park in the parking lot, just so they can raise enough money to keep it going. Every Friday and Saturday night is already taken from March to November by the racetrack. And when you say they don't race every Friday and Saturday night, that's, that's right. They practice on Friday nights. They schedule a race on a Saturday, but the following Saturday, they have a rain day scheduled. So if you want to schedule something like an outdoor activity at Baiton Park or some of the churches in the area, or even a simple birthday party at your house, you can't do that because you can't be guaranteed they'll be, won't be rained out the week before, and they'll have it on the date that you've set. I did do some research. I went online. Hickory Motor Speedway, if you go to their website, they have eighty-seven sponsors listed for the racetrack. That's the way they gain extra money to do extra things. Eighty-seven. Tri-County currently has seven sponsors. Now, what that tells me is they haven't put much effort forth to go out and get sponsors. Matter of fact, on their website, it'll tell you that you can have, purchase all these billboards, a ten by twenty-four, ten by twelve, ten by eight, but it don't list any money out beside of it, how much it costs. It's got a dollar sign, but it doesn't tell you how much all that is. So we talked a little bit about the burden on taxpayers. Why should the burden of providing money or extra hours be placed on the taxpayers that live in the surrounding community of the racetrack? According to their numbers that they provided, their best night, they have about four thousand people. Their average is about three thousand people. But we don't know that for sure. That's an estimate that was given to us. So taxpayers who live in this area are being asked to bear the burden for an event that approximately five percent of the people, of the population of this county would, would attend on a regular basis. It's actually a little less than that. Now, again, the racetrack's not a government-owned agency. It's a privately owned business. So as a privately owned business, why should they not be the ones going out soliciting sponsors? Or why should they not be required to invest their own funds in their business in order to reduce the impact of the noise? Which we've said all along, if they reduce the impact of the noise, then they can have extra hours. The only thing that I can see that they've done is spend the taxpayer money that was given to them on additional lighting, on improvements to the track, but then also to come up here every two or three months and ask for additional this or additional that. They come to this board of commissioners. The racetrack ordinance was established a long time ago to create a compromise between the racetrack owners and the community. A compromise, something that would work. The current owners of the racetrack knew exactly what that ordinance was when they purchased the racetrack. They knew what their boundaries were. If they want to expand, I think the burden should be on the racetrack and not on the backs of the taxpayers of this county. That's my opinion. If you guys decide you want to change the ordinance, that'll be fine. I will be voting no to do that.
All right.
Donald, in this, in this amendment, did we make it clear, is it in writing, that if they don't have the barrier up by the beginning of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five season, that we will pull that back?
How you handle it is that it has a built-in sunset, so there's a fixed term. So if that hasn't happened, or, you know, when the new season starts, you can renew this. So it's an automatic switch.
So we have to renew it in the-
You would have to renew it for the spring, yeah.
Okay. So, um-
There'll be another vote.
Craig, you understand that if this passes tonight, that if you don't have barriers up come spring of twenty-twenty-five race season, that we're not going to prove going into twenty-twenty-five season. You understand that, correct?
I understand, yeah, but I, again, when you say barriers-
The sound barriers. You bought poles?
I understand. I'm, 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 what I'm asking is, I just want to clarify, are we circling the whole property? Or, that, that, just clarification on the sound barrier?
Yeah, I think the, the, the issue for me is, is that, uh, that backstretch turns, I guess would be, what, one and two, maybe halfway between two and three, that little area right there. Um, is kind of where I'm visioning it to be. Sure, come on up.
The area that you're talking about, turns one and two, that face the, I guess it would be the northern side of the property, there is an elevation at that end of the racetrack where the fence between us and the golf course is. As you go about nine hundred feet, close, maybe a thousand feet, then it starts dropping down. So any barrier that you put past that, I don't think would be effective because it's going to be down below the surface of the racetrack then. So we've looked at it. We're proposing, or what we're hoping to do is a thousand feet on that side of the racetrack. Again, that's going to put it up, it's probably fifteen foot above the level where tier parking is. So again, you go ten more foot, that's twenty-five foot above the tier parking area, which is another four or five feet above the racetrack service. So we're, we're prepared to do that, but I just, I wasn't going to sit here and say, yes, sir, when, when, when you're thinking the whole thing and we're thinking the, the only, the area that's going to be affected.
No, it doesn't make, there is going to be effect. It wouldn't make any sense to put it below the track.
Right.
It's, it would be in the area that's impacting the, the citizens in that particular area.
While we're discussing, I just make sure everybody's on the same page here.
Fair question. Um, I just want to make sure you guys understand that.
Yes, sir, yeah.
You know, my feeling is, is that you guys made an effort, you bought the poles, and we've told you all along that if you would make an effort, we'd give you a little something. So it's going to be hard, and I understand the cost of the poles and putting the poles up. Um, but I also understand that we have to consider the citizens in that area, and you and I have had numerous conversations about it. Um, but I just want to make sure you understood that if we don't get the barriers up, that come to spring, I'm not going to vote to extend it or to do it again next year.
Understand.
Uh, I'm giving you the opportunity, to Robbie's point, I'm giving you an opportunity to do something.
And, and, and also to Mr. Wilkie's point, uh, you're right, we got about seventeen thousand dollars left of that grant money. That grant money was-
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
You got about seventeen thousand left, not seventy.
No, I said, I said seventeen.
Oh, I thought you said seventy.
That grant money was, was for the state. I mean, it was, you know, we, because of, uh, uh, Destin Hall, they got the wording changed, so we qualified for that. But somebody was going to get it, whether it was us or somebody else, whoever qualified for it. Governor Cooper's the one that put all that deal together. We just reaped the benefits of it. I understand, it's taxpayer money, I understand that. But Wilkes-Barre got nineteen million, uh, uh, Charlotte got ten million, Rocketham got ten million. There was five million dollars left of the forty-five million that was distributed to tracks within North Carolina that met those specifications. So we were lucky that we got that. To one other point that, that, uh, Mr. Wilkie may have brought up, Hickory Speedway, they can test there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They are able to generate money. Hickory Speedway is, is not in the same shape as Tri-County Speedway, and I'm, I'm proud to say that. We've made such improvements at that Speedway, we have people calling us, wanting to come to us. And we've been having to tell them no for two years. And that's why this is so important to us because it's revenue that we can bring in that will help make it even bigger. Uh, I, I've got people that are, that are coming, uh, this month, in a couple of weeks, and, and they'd shoot me if I told you who they are. Because the place, the grandstand would be full, and we don't want that, you know? It is, is, we got some, some really special people coming to, that want to be at Tri-County, want to test at Tri-County. So, anything else?
Not that I can think of. I just, you guys have been good stewards out there, and, um, you've offered a track for special events and things like that, and, and that's greatly appreciated. But to, to Commissioner Wilkie's point is, it's really about the noise.
I understand.
So I think that is the top number one priority, and if these barriers can eliminate the noise, then great. Um, I, I hope they will, and I hope they'll do exactly what we want them to do. And I also understand you were here to last meeting. You've got to have revenue, generate revenue to put the poles up, right? So I get that. So that's why I'm supporting this, is that, is to give you the opportunity to, to generate some revenue to put those poles up. But I'm going to say it again, if you ain't got them up come spring, I'm not voting to move to extend it.
Like we've heard so many other people talking it out about the cost of things going up. And, and when we first checked on this a year ago, uh, it's gone up significantly from just the, the, the pieces that it takes to, you know, to make this deal happen. But we're willing to put forth the effort to make that happen.
Yeah, I'm not saying just the effort. Come spring, if they ain't up, I'm not, the other ones might support it, but I'm not going to support it if, if they ain't up.
Yes, sir.
Am I reading the ordinance correctly? It's four per month.
Correct.
So it could be Monday, every Monday in that month, but other than that, it would be just Monday, or Monday, Tuesday, twice a month. Just four, four times. Is that, is that, I'm understanding it?
That is correct. When I, I will say this, I did talk to the owner, Shad Higgins, and Shad said that typically it's going to be one day, maybe two. It's, it's going to be rare that it's going to be four days. Um, now, maybe once word gets out that they're allowing that to happen, they may get some more activity, but, um-
It's in addition to what they're already doing. So I want you to understand, it's not just-
No, that's correct.
It's three or four days.
That is correct.
Have we, uh-
The current ordinance doesn't allow them, it allows them to run Thursday, Friday, Saturday, two consecutive, uh, two consecutive days. They can't run all three. Um, this would allow them to, once or twice or whatever, a month, four, up to four times a month, they could bring a, um, a cup team in, um, to test, to generate revenue. They, they rent that track out.
And most of this will be from like ten to four or somewhere.
And it's not, it, it's-
Early morning or late evening.
And Jeff's right. It's, to Donald's point earlier, this is a, they will put a car on the track. This is what Shad's telling me. They will put a car on the track. They'll run three or four laps. They'll bring it in. They'll work on it thirty minutes to an hour, take it back out, run a few more laps, bring it back in. And here's what's happening. In NASCAR, and correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, NASCAR teams cannot test on a NASCAR sanctioned track. This particular track is not NASCAR sanctioned, so it's got a lot of, um, interest because of that. The cup, the teams that are going to be there during the week are going, primarily going to be cup teams and professional, um, late model type teams. Um, because the good old boys that race on Saturday nights, they're working during the week. They're not going to be testing. Um, they come on Fridays and test, or Thursdays, whatever day, they, they work out. But this is going to be primarily NASCAR cup teams, professional cup teams, and professional late model teams that are, you know, sponsorship type teams. And they'll have, you know, there's going to be well-known people there that'll be on this track.
So have we reached out? I know we talked about, um, during May, the schools with EOC, but there could be other times at the school, be it a field day, uh, or something like that, where all the kids are outside, um, have to deal with the potential of, of, of the noise. I know there's several churches around that, and I know funerals from time to time, uh, will happen in those churches, maybe during those times. Have we made any consideration for, uh, a school, if they're having a field day? I know we've got, end of grade testing, but a field day where all the kids are out on the field? Or if, uh, Baiton Baptist Church is just right down the road, and there may be some other churches, that out of respect, that we would honor, uh, the time for a funeral, even if it was during the ten to four, that where they could have their funeral? I mean, or, I, I mean, are, are we making considerations for that?
We've already done that. We've reached out to Batten, and we did cancel practice during the time of a, of a funeral one Saturday. And, uh, I mean, we just stopped all, everything on the racetrack and had them to let us know when they were done.
Okay.
And, and then with our curfew at eleven o'clock, that really packed up that night. But we made it happen because we want to be good neighbors.
Okay. So you would do this also on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, if something like that?
As long as we got their, their schedule, their calendar, then, then we would be able to, to tell the team that's in question wanting to come, it's not available that day. Yeah, we, that's, that's easy. Again, you know, if, if, as long as we knew their schedule. I, i- if we had already committed to that, I think, you know, and then they call, hey, we're doing field day tomorrow, it'd be hard to pull, pull a plug then.
Well, I understand about, advance notice about field day, and they, they, the schools should know that, that's in, but now the funerals, uh, you know, they, they may, uh, they may not know what the last-
Well, and that funeral hadn't be on a Saturday, so they knew that, that there was a possibility we were racing, so they reached out to us. And we said, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work with you.
Yeah, my understanding is, from Shad, is Baiton is aware that, I mean, all they have to do is call if there's anything going on. Baiton calls and says, hey, we got, we have a funeral on whatever day, and they'll, they'll know to, um, to stop practice for that particular moment. That's what I, because I asked Shad the same question.
That's correct.
Yeah. They have an understanding with the church.
Well, I mean, I, I've been on the board long enough to where I've, I've, I've been dealing with the, the racetrack for, for, for many years. Well, I mean, I, I've been on the board long enough to where I've, I've, I've been dealing with the, the racetrack for, for, for many years, and it's just, uh, um, it, it's just very sensitive. Um, I know, I know there was a petition, and I know Commissioner Potter reached out to quite a few folk. Um, and so, you know, my concern is that, you know, if, if we go forward, uh, and we, we get tremendous pushback, uh, from that, do we, can, can we pull back any sooner, or are we gonna have to wait till the race season's over? I mean, if, I mean, if we have, you know, 'cause I, I, you know, people may not realize what, what we've done until they hear it going, and, and then get upset, maybe these people didn't participate in the petition, or whatever. I just wanna be sensitive to the community. I understand the barrier, getting it up as quick as possible, uh, and I hope that reduces the sound. Um, yeah, so that's, uh, that's kinda where I'm at.
So, I, I, I did, um, and you make a great point, and I forgot that, I did tell Shad that if we got significant pushback, that, you know, we would have to have, we'd have to have a conversation around what the next step would be. Um, I don't know if it, is it written in there, in the amendment, Donald?
So, I, I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question.
So, Mike's question was, if, if, if we start getting inundated with calls, trying to be sensitive to it, if we start getting inundated, is there a clause that allows us to pull back?
You can repeal it at any time, it would take two readings, so, so it's not, not a short process, as with any one it says now, but yes.
Okay.
You have that authority.
I'll tell you what's weird is, um, and I, I guess I don't, obviously, if you were maybe an engineer, what you'd understand it, but I did go talk to several people in, in the area, stood on their front porches or stood in their living rooms to talk to them. Um, right at the track, kinda in turn, would be in turn three, there's people that live right in there, and they were testing the day that I was there, it was on a Friday, and they were testing, or practicing, I guess, not testing, but practicing. Um, you could hear them, but it wasn't as bad as I thought it would have been, because I guess that sound, houses are kinda down below the track, so the sound's going over the top of the track. Where in Robbie's instance, the town, the sound's coming out, and there's nothing, there's nothing to block it. So, I'm hopeful that those barriers will make a difference. Um, and I just found it interesting that it's really not as bad, but it ain't really that bad sitting right at the track, 'cause it's sitting down below the track.
Our closest neighbors love us.
No, they do, I agree, I talked to them.
The last race, I went, drove around, just parked several different places, and, I mean, it, you know, you could hear it, it's a racetrack, but I didn't think it was crazy loud. Anywhere I went and parked, up and down Hickory Nut Ridge Road, and went around to the Conley Springs Road, and I mean, I just, I mean, it was a racetrack, but I was shocked that it wasn't louder than it was.
I think the loud parts on that turn one and two is pretty rough over there.
With the air conditioner on and the TV going, and still hear it.
Yeah. 'Cause I think you're up more so than the-
Well, not just me, my neighbors.
No, I'm saying that you guys are setting up a little higher than they are in turn two and three right there, that we're just talking about, it's, it's down, so.
And on the track side, they're below-
Right.
That wall.
That's what I mean.
There is a, there is a wall there on that side.
Yeah, there's a bank.
Where the tunnel's at, there's a wall.
Yeah, there's a big bank there too.
And it sends that noise up.
Well, that's where they got all the ads, right there, yeah. So, the, and to, to Robbie's point earlier, um, you know, when you get to, you get that barrier up, you can sell spots right there, you know, to help pay for that.
I apologize for the website not being up to date, but we didn't have enough money to hire somebody to operate the website, so, we have more than seven sponsors, we just don't have them all on there.
All right. Anybody else, questions or comments? Thank you, Craig. Well, with all of that, uh, I'll open it up and entertain a, a motion to adopt this ordinance amendment as has been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we adopt this ordinance amendments to the racetracks and drag strips.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And ask Commissioner Wilkie dissenting, so, we certainly appreciate all the opportunity to speak and talk about it, and, uh, hope that everything goes well going forward for those folks there. And I guess to Commissioner Potter's point is, if you've got heartburn with it, call us and let us know going forward, so. All right. That brings us then to our consent agenda this evening.
Good faith.
I'm sorry, if I could, you will have to vote on this ordinance twice.
Okay.
They will have to vote again in July because of Senate Bill three hundred.
And it's been duly advertised, prof, prof, you know, posted all over the place about this meeting, so, but it will be again, in July eighth. All right.
Consent agenda, uh, we have the Highbrow Mountain Communications Tower lease payment, that is roughly two hundred eighty-five dollars a month for over five years, amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. We have a budget revision to approve capital expenditure for stretchers, you already approved buying these, but we were able to find funding, so it won't come out of the, uh, budget in general fund. Our health department has been significantly good about going out and getting grants, and so, uh, Ms. Anna Cook now contacted us and said, hey, we have some money left over since the end of the year, do we have anything we can spend it on? So, her staff went to work with Mercy Services, this is one of a few expenditures that we have, but it will save the county a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for the two ambulances that are coming online to have the power load stretchers. So, those are hugely important for ergonomics and, uh, the safety of our employees, reducing workers' comp claims, so we really need those, and that's, uh, that's a big win for us all. Uh, we have several grant applications, uh, Mr. DePell with the Sheriff's Office is here, and we have approval of the grant submission for the twenty twenty-four COPS hiring grant. Uh, if we're able to receive this, would be a seventy-five percent grant, twenty-five percent match back to the county to hire, uh, deputies that focus on domestic violence and crisis intervention, and also take care of smaller, uh, issues like unattended deaths, to take officers off the road. This would be a fantastic grant if we get it, but you'd be approving that submittal tonight. Uh, a grant from the Gary Sinise Foundation, uh, we've not applied for this before, as I'm aware, but this would allow us to, uh, provide ATVs to do searches and things like that in rough terrain and in Wilson Creek. Approval of grant application submission for the twenty twenty-four Patrick Leahy Vest Partnership, this allows us to get fifty percent reimbursement back on eleven vests for our officers. This fantastic program, I've been aware of for a while. Approval of grant submission from Black Rifle Coffee Company, uh, which is tuition assistance for our folks to do the forensic, uh, analysis training for software. So, when we have more and more cyber crimes, this allows us to have the proper software and the proper training to do that. Approval of a grant application submission for AK, from AKC Reunite to adopt a K nine cop grant, this, uh, gives us seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, with a local twenty-five hundred dollar match to the, toward the purchase of two new K nines who are retiring. Uh, the next big one is our HCCCBG funding, you know this as our in-home aid services that we use. This, uh, works through multiple nonprofit and for-profit agencies. The Western Piedmont Council government solicited RFPs, and the amount this year is five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, uh, that goes toward those services, and our local match is sixty-four thousand eight oh one. It is down about thirteen thousand dollars from last year's grant, just be aware of that. You're approving the, uh, JCPC funding plan, this, uh, also includes things like the Conflict Resolution Center and psychological assessments on teens and children who may have been assaulted. Uh, memorandum of agreement for cooperative extension, this is the program where we match our part of the state's contribution for salaries. Uh, and it, that's a nice controlled environment, it helps us with that, and then we have the Economic Development Advisory Committee of reappointments. Ms. Bonnie Coddle, Jonathan Greer, Rick Coffey, and Max Dyer, and the new town manager, Daniel Cobb, uh, for Granite Falls, replacing the Granite Falls Town Manager. If you remember, these committee members, uh, are on staggered three-year terms, the first group was a one-year term, group two's a two-year term, and group three's a three-year term, so this is the first of the one-year folks that would be reappointed. You also have a fireworks application for Tri-County Speedway, approval of the minutes from May thirteenth, and a budget workshop from May fourteenth. Item twenty-four that was added is the camera system at, uh, HHS. Uh, y'all got a quick email on that, uh, last week, and there's a memo there in front of you for a budget transfer. That is our most traffic building, of course, and it's also a building where we require, um, the courts, uh, have child exchanges, visitation exchanges, and so we have to keep cameras in that building, just, you know, for the criminal element as well. The system is twenty years old, the main system, and it's been rebuilt multiple times, and now there's no more parts available to rebuild it and get it up and running. Our folks and our vendors spent two weeks to try to do that, and so they recommend we're gonna have to replace it, so, uh, if you put a new brain in the system, the older cameras don't work with that brain, so this is a full system, it'll be four K, it also is AI-enabled. So, if you wanna search for, uh, Donnie's, uh, plaid jacket, and you give it the colors, it'll be able to track that around the building. I, I have to pick on his jacket, 'cause I like it. Uh, and now, you, uh, you also have a grant that's outstanding with FEMA and, um, Nickel Jiza. That grant is two months out, before we'll know about it. If we're able to get that grant, that will offset some of the funding that we already have set aside for that project. So, if we get that three hundred thousand dollars, that's the less money we have to spend in the budget, so that could come back and pay for this. But, you need to go ahead and move forward with it now, and you may get the chance to reimburse yourselves, if we're lucky. Uh, it's been down for over two weeks now, almost three weeks now, and so we need to do something about it. Uh, Soil and Water requested a contribution to Tuttle State Forest. It's a line item transfer for only two thousand dollars, but because it's to a nonprofit, you approve those with each budget. Since you're adding a nonprofit funding, you guys need to approve that, and next year, if they wanna do it, we can budget that or do a budget amendment in the future. That would be the only reason for that, is that you guys approve every nonprofit funding as a commissioner action. And then we have a fireworks display for the Town Road His, for approval.
All right. So, here in the consent agenda, anybody have any questions, or do we have a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and, uh, we're gonna be entering into a closed session now for another hour and a half. Uh, so, I want to make a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, dot eleven, A four, to discuss a matter related to economic development with the county attorney, county manager, deputy county manager, county clerk, chief financial officer, economic development director, economic development staff, and any other personnel that may attend as we deem necessary. So, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and we thank everyone for being here this evening, and, uh, we will rejoin you in about an hour and a half. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think my mom's over this.
Thank you, sir.